Right, it is six o'clock Tuesday, November twelve, two thousand twenty four. This is the time for the regular meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission. And Michael Faith, the Chair of the Commission, hereby call this meeting to order. Agenda and packet available at LitchfieldPark.gov. A video will be made available twenty-four hours after the meeting. Please join me in the pledge regions.
I would just leave to do the plan. We have the United States. It's true, the Republic, which is saying one nation.
Uh, next item is all of the community. This is the time set for citizens who could like to address mission on non-agenda items. I'm assuming we have none. No, none. Moving on to the next item is business, a approval of minutes. Presenter is Randy. Randy, I'm assuming you have really nothing to to present.
Uh, Chair, thank you. I do not have anything to present on the approval of the minutes this evening.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes of the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four and the June eleventh, twenty. For regular meetings, regular minutes.
Second, second, all right. Um, any discussion? All right, go ahead. Any more discussion?
That's pretty optimistic. Lot of lot of public showing up.
Any more discussion? None? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None? Uh, the action passes. Next is the proposed zoning code text amendment. Presenter Randy, please go ahead, Randy.
Uh, Chair, good evening. I apologize for not being there in person. I'm a positive person, but this is one instance where being positive is detrimental to being out in public. So, uh, thank you for your consideration. Thank you for coming in this evening. Uh, we have essentially two presentations tonight with our regular meeting occurring first. Then we'll do our work study session immediately following. So this is a continuation of the last, uh, conversation we had in, uh, September regarding our sign code. Uh, since then, uh, staff has continued to, uh, work through this, uh, work through a legal review. Uh, a tenuous legal review to ensure, uh, we are on the up and up and addressing all the things we need to address. For your consider this, uh, consideration this evening is, uh, essentially the next step of that, uh, for a formal recommendation to city council towards adoption. You'll notice here and we'll talk about it, uh, much later in this conversation, but, uh, just for the record, this is, uh, file number PZ dash two four dash four two. Just a quick recap of what we talked about in September. I apologize that, you know, my intent for you going forward is work study session and then, uh, recommendation hearing. I know he snuck, uh, historic preservation commission in between those. So just to recap what occurred about six weeks ago. This is all based on a, uh, US Supreme Court case called Reversetown Gilbert. That content-based laws are under strict scrutiny. Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather, under the First Amendment freedom of speech. Essentially, there's, there's two, uh, tests that have to come into play here. Uh, the government must demonstrate that law has been narrowly tailored to serve compelling interests. Because, uh, Gilbert thought that aesthetics, uh, and traffic safety, uh, were the case for, uh, ideological signs, religious, uh, institution signs, but not for other types of signs. Uh, the, the code was essentially found, uh, to be unconstitutional as well. Um, what this means is, and again, this is just a recap from September. What this means is we all had to react to this, uh, Supreme Court case and conduct a two-step analysis. Uh, does this ordinance language refer to the content or the message of the sign? If, uh, not, is there evidence, uh, showing that the city adopted the regulation specifically because of agreement or disagreement? But basically what it says. Uh, so, you know, the always easiest way to remember is cities cannot read, uh, the sign. Now, again, uh, just to recap, we can talk about tight quantity, size, placement, lighting, uh, permanent versus temporary materials and visibility. And I apologize, you all seem, uh, very small on my screen. If there is any sort of, uh, question or comment concerned, uh, please straight to the microphone. Feel free to interrupt me. I'll try to keep track of that. So as far as our code goes, uh, we've conducted a comprehensive update to section thirty-five. There's obviously the most important thing. We've added language in the goals and the requirements as far as content neutrality. We're not going to, uh, base decisions or regulations on what it states. We've added new definitions and I'll get to that, uh, coming up here on the next slide. We've updated some allowances, uh, for certain sign types. And, uh, hopefully everyone had a chance to look at the red line, which is clean versions, just to see the before and after of what was and what is, uh, possibly pending our future. Anything that had content restrictions as far as what the sign could say, hours of operation, that sort of thing, that's all been struck. We removed anything, uh, any of the sign types that are content-based. And this is tricky and we'll get to this, but that includes, you know, in some instances, uh, a sign, a wayfinding sign. If you go into a parking lot and it says, you know, this business that way, this business that way. Well, the ironic thing is you'd only know that it's a wayfinding sign by reading it. If I can't read it, well, how does that work? And we'll, we'll get, we'll come to that here in a second. Lastly, as mentioned last time, political signs are handled by the state. We don't want anything to do with that. The state takes care of that. We don't need to discuss that further. I know this isn't work study session, but if there is any questions, again, in the presentation, feel free to jump in. So, uh, new definitions and allowances, uh, service stations. Ironically, we didn't actually have a definition or allowance for the, the price sign, as it were. This is something that were not content-based, were use-based. What I mean by that is this doesn't give carte blanche to anyone to start using, uh, electronic message signs. You know, the block unread, you know, they almost look like traffic signs, that sort of thing. So this is a use-based, uh, allowance and requirement and definition based on being a service station, a gas station as more commonly known. And this, uh, now does include an electronic component. Again, uh, in general, we don't have any electric sign or electronic signs. We don't plan to have any electric signs, but this is one exception as far as, you know, the price does change throughout the day, throughout the month, throughout the year and so on. Real estate signs, this has been clarified to state that real estate signs are for a property for sale on that property. What I mean by that is we couldn't get into a situation where a Realtor can put out an open house sign, but someone else couldn't put golden doodles for sale. You know, that, again, that's a content-based requirement now as far as off-site signage. And I'll talk about that coming up, actually right here. Excuse me, uh, neighborhood. This is, uh, it's a bit of a generic definition and a generic naming convention, but, you know, essentially it's to, uh, avoid content requirements. So a neighborhood sign, and this is something out of best practices around the valley, is any sort of temporary lead-in signs that could serve for the open house, the garage sale. What's crucial to that is, again, real estate sign can stay on the property as long as it's for sale. All those sorts of lead-in signs, bandit signs, you know, they're on H-stakes. Those are really meant for a temporary nature. The ones that are, you know, on the sun, on the corners that are being attached to palm trees, uh, we flip houses. Those are ones that, uh, could come in through a temporary, uh, sign permit, could be, uh, go through that process and be located there for a certain amount of days or a certain amount of time. However, any of those other ti- uh, examples as far as garage sales, open houses, those are temporary. And you'll see in, uh, the redlining clean versions of the code, those are essentially removed by end of day. You know, because you're not having a garage sale overnight, you're not having an open house overnight. It just was a, the cleanest way to, uh, correctly allow the correct types of signs that are off-site. Drive-through, uh, this used to be called menu board. Again, you only know it's a menu board because you're looking at it. And this is, as, as odd as that sounds, that's one of the ones that it's simpler to be more vague. So drive-through is the name of the sign. It's for any drive-through use. So it could be bank, it could be restaurant, it could be dry cleaners, whatever. The case is if it's a drive-through, you know, it has certain allowances now that are just more broadly defined. Lastly is one, uh, again, from best practices, just called incidental. Uh, this is for the wayfinding, the directory. These are not intended for advertising. These cannot be seen from right of way. It's just how they would generally be located. You'll notice in the code, uh, they're very small size because they're intended to be within that field of parking. You know, turn here, uh, enter here, uh. You know, I think of like the take five automotive, it says do not enter signs. That's, that's not intended for advertising. You can't see it from right of way, but it gives direction. But again, can't call it directional sign because then I'd be knowing what it has on the sign copy. The prohibited sign subsection, this is kind of, uh, marrying up a couple of the different ideas and discussions PNC has had over this past year. Uh, electronic reader panels. So again, the electric, electronic sign, again, unless service station, it's not permitted. Now, there is a growing, uh, desire by some types of uses to have this as part of it. Uh, certainly if you're familiar with, uh, the Bashes is a diehard and camelback across the street is a plaza. I'm just going to call Owens World because Owens World and Goodwill are anchors. They do have an electronic, uh, message sign. Is that appropriate for Litchfield Park? Probably not. Uh, is there somewhere where it may make sense? I don't know. Uh, we don't want to, uh, strike it completely. That's why we have the allowance through CSP and, you know, that CSP is essentially designated to try to create alternatives where appropriate and under, you know, scrutiny as far as how that would or would not make sense. Vehicle signs, these are anything that you'd see that's essentially non-operational. Uh, there's lots of businesses in other jurisdictions that, uh, will park a vehicle, they don't intend to use, uh, against the right of way, against the very edge of the parking lot to try to essentially, uh, create a secondary monument sign. You already have, and we already allow monument signs along, uh, the street fringe. That's what they're intended to do. Parking a panel van against the roadway to act to the same thing doesn't, you know, meet, uh, qualifications are what we're trying to accomplish here. Now, the exception to this is, you know, Randy's plumbing, I have a van. I parked the van somewhere that's, that's just part of, you know, the work being conducted. That's not something that would fall under this category. Roof mounted signs, uh, pylon and pulse signs, these are almost historic at this, uh, day and age. These aren't, uh, some of it's almost coming back, uh, retroactively. I'd say as far as, uh, some of the more revitalizing downtowns as far as these allowances, that's not the situation we're in. Uh, this is something just to clarify that we do not, uh, permit. Lastly, portable signs, you know, there's lots of different ways to, uh, temporarily erect a sign that's not the intent nor the allowance here. There are certain allowances through temporary signs like A-frames and banners. A lot of the, uh, tables you may have noticed used to have two columns which had almost verbatim allowances depending on if they were neighborhood commercial or, uh, uh, regional commercial, that sort of designations, uh, shopping centers. There wasn't, uh, a lot of difference. The almost ironic thing is, and it's here, um, on the third bullet point. Every commercial center in Litchfield Park already has a comprehensive sign, uh, program. So even though we have regulations and we've outlined regulations for our non-residential districts or commercial districts, uh, essentially they're not used, uh, at this time because, you know, Plaza Park fries, Albertson's, uh, they all already have a CSP which essentially overrides and governs, uh, sign allowances in those areas. Uh, the other note on that third bullet, one has two. Yeah, for some reason, uh, the diestart and camelback, what you think of dignity, health, uh, take five, Denny's has a comprehensive sign program for the entirety of the center. Uh, but then, uh, for reasons unknown, we approved take five to have a separate comprehensive sign program within a comprehensive sign program. I don't know how to execute that properly. That's something that, uh, just keep in mind, uh, we'll talk about in our example of, uh, a regulation within a regulation which, uh, may conflict. The other parts of this are it's no longer zoning district-based, it's use-based. Where this comes in is there's a lot of, well, no, I shouldn't say that. There's a few selected, uh, examples of non-residential uses near residential uses that should not have, uh, commercial science standards, but also shouldn't have residential science standards. You know, it's, it's a tricky balance, but we think we found the solution here. It's simply just because, uh, based on uses instead. Now residential use, we're out of houses to build, uh, except infill or, uh, you know, demolish and remodel. There isn't any more, uh, subdivisions to be constructed. So, uh, those are almost historic as far as, uh, should anyone wish to, you know, do any sorts of, um, changes in their communities such as the village or the greens and just to make sure that they have something to turn back to. And then the rest of that again is based on, uh, use instead of district. Now, uh, speaking of, and this kind of ties into what I'm saying, uh, wall signs, wall signs did not used to be, uh, permitted within, uh, public facilities. There was something we, it was kind of that in-between, just to tie this back up between, uh, residential district and a commercial district. What we did is we essentially looked to see what was already been done. So, you know, uh, Litchfield Elementary School, Litchfield Park Rec Center, uh, you know, our, uh, Maricopa County Library all already have signs in the building, which, you know, by letter of law are not permitted because they all fall, fall within the public facilities district. None of them are illuminated though. So we did feel as though this was a good compromise for a new allowance in public facilities to have wall signs, but not to impose lighting on the residents that surround it. You know, public facility once again is adjacent or directly abutting, uh, residential district. So this isn't, uh, a new blight on the houses that surround the area. Uh, just again, we're, uh, we have allowance for resident, uh, subdivision flag poles as far as the kinds as you see, uh, new houses. We're all done. Uh, we have no houses left to be built as far as, uh, new residential subdivisions. And then lastly, not conforming signs violations, those subsections at the very end have not been touched. Uh, everything is as is, this wasn't, uh, a necessary, uh, part of this amendment. Uh, again, there was a number of, uh, open-ended questions asked at the end of the, uh, previous work-study session on these topics. First being murals, this is something, uh, it's, it's near impossible to not end up in a lawsuit to treat murals not as signs. What I mean by that is the only way to know it's not a sign is to, uh, read it once again. So the idea that, uh, a panda on bamboo leaves, you know, on an office building is art. You put that on Panda Express and it's advertisement. That's the kind of, you know, splitting hairs, commercial versus non-commercial speech that's very hard, uh, to have good legal standing with. So the, the best practices is always just to treat murals as signage. And that just counts towards allowances of wall signs in that regard. Governmental signs, we, we touched on it, but this has just been expanded to say that anything that is governmental speech, and that is something that we can differentiate even with this, uh, Supreme Court decision. As far as, yeah, as you're driving up Litchfield, you know, it says turn here for library, turn here for city hall. That is exempted. We are just fine to continue operation as we do independently of that. Electronic message I've covered as well as, uh, commercial vehicles. Banners, we didn't actually, uh, define or prescribe how to do a banner successfully. This is now housed within the temporary sign section. And then window signs, uh, this is something that we already did cover pretty well. We're seeing, uh, new, uh, ideas like the examples here of Chase, Panda Express and Walgreens where they have signs that aren't building-mounted, uh, but they're inset within almost the lobby area and but they just put a window in front of it. So they've essentially granted themselves additional signage by not putting it on the building, by putting it inside the building and putting a window in front of it. That's fine. We understand that, that still will count towards, uh, maximum window. So with that, uh, again, we'd be happy to answer any questions on this presentation or the red line or clean versions of the code. Our request is to recommend, uh, the approval of the zoning code text amendment. Again, file number PZ twenty-four forty-two to city council. Subject to that red line and clean version, uh, provided with you this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Randy? Go ahead, Lawrence.
So one of the questions might be, um, you may have answered, uh, signs that have taped inside windows, um, sample the veil star or by prize that packs big, large letters, red letters taped on the inside, uh, of the window. And it's been on for years, so, uh, does that fall into your interior signage category?
Yes, uh, Chair, Commissioner Lawrence, uh, thank you for the question. And I caught most of what you said, so if I missed something, I apologize. Um, the, the ironic thing is, uh, that's a good example of how the CSP has overridden our best intents and our, uh, best code language. Uh, again, every commercial center has, uh, their own allowances and their own essentially mini version of the zoning code and mini version of the sign code by writing this, uh, comprehensive sign program that overrules our discretion. Uh, to answer your question more broadly, eh, and I may have misspoke, any of those signs that are inset from the window count as wall signs, not as window signs, excuse me. Is part of your maximum allowance as far as, uh, the wall square footage. So I've, I've worked with fries frequently in the past as far as, you know, sometimes besides the name of the business, it says Chase, may say Chase ATM, it may say Starbucks, it may say, you know, the little clinic, what have you. You know, for that example, they're all based on that CSP allowance instead of code allowances.
My second question was about temporary signage. Again, you may have addressed it, but how long can somebody have a temporary sign up? If we're, they have to get the more permanent sign up. Um, an example, it's not Litchfield Park, just down the road from us, but the ballpark, um, at, um, hundred and eleven and Campbell's Ave has a, like a canvas sign that's been up for years. So is there a timeframe?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. So the temporary sign permit application will have variation based on type of sign. I say that to tell you, you know, an A-frame sign is, uh, put up and take down every day. The, the banners, I've seen examples of what you've mentioned as far as banners goes. Sometimes temporary banners somehow become permanent fixtures to buildings. We have, and I, this was not modified in our code, that permanent signs are of specific materials. Temporary signs have different allowances. So there isn't, there isn't an opportunity to use a temporary banner as a permanent fixture to a building. As far as maximum of days, right now it's at thirty, uh, per permit. If there is, we, and we haven't had any sort of, uh, uh, abuse of that sort of, you know, just every thirty days come in and get a new one. But if that did become an issue, certainly we'd, uh, need to cross that bridge as needed.
So how long would someone need to, um, take the sign down? If they had it up for thirty days and then they took it down for five days and put it back up there, would they be okay to do that for another thirty days? Or is there anything that specifies how long they would need to have it done down before they put it back up again?
Sure, Commissioners, so one of the, the hard parts about that is, you know, if you are a business that every weekend you have, you know, some sort of, uh, special sale, uh, and it's the holiday season and every weekend you wanted to put it up, uh, to advertise that. I don't think we want to minimize, uh, the use of it, you know, but if there was, I, I, I haven't considered, nor have I seen any sort of, uh, moratorium period, uh, between applications. Uh, that's something we can certainly consider. And the, the good part about that is, you know, those sorts of, uh, nuances are found within the application form, not within code. So that's something that can be edited as needed without, uh, this, you know, essential four-month process of a text amendment.
Any other questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Lawrence.
Uh, Commissioner Alvy just brought up to mind, uh, retail stores that we may have in Litchfield Square moving merchandise outside the store. And there'd be some temporary signage there or whatever, but would merchandise, uh, in front of the store really, could that be constitute a sign? It's identity.
Yeah, Commissioner, that's a, uh, that's a fair question to ask. There, as much as the Supreme Court has taken away from one's ability to, uh, say what is and is not a sign as that goes, uh, uh, I'll, uh, it's a two-part answer. One, we can still regulate that appropriately as needed. If, if there is something that says, and I, I don't mean to call anyone specifically, but I think of the Ace Hardware has merchandise out front all day. And I don't know that our code, and this is going to be in a different section, I don't know that our code permits, you know, sidewalk sales or outdoors displays of merchandise. You know, I always think of the Home Depot or the Lowe's. Everyone else has to put their merchandise inside a store, but those sorts of, you know, big box home improvement stores have merchandise throughout the parking lot. And why are they the exemption to that sort of, uh, look and feel of the rest of the community? So, uh, in Litchfield Square, we certainly hope we have retail, that'd be great and that sort of retail. We'll have to look at that independently as far as the merchandise goes. Uh, I, the signs, you know, there would be some allowances for A-frames, but I would hope we wouldn't have any additional signage as part of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Seeing none, uh, this is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion.
How do you ca- excuse me, uh, Chair, how do you categorize it? Um, would you categorize it zoning code text amendment and the file number?
Yes.
Okay. And would you categorize as moving it forward?
Move to approve or move to recommend approval to the city council.
Okay, I move to recommend approval of zoning code text amendment, file number PZ twenty-four forty-two.
For approval for the city council?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, all those who favor say aye. All those against? None, motion passes. We'll move on, uh, executive session, I don't think we have one today. Staff reports and current events.
Thank you, Chair. I do have some, and, uh, you know, this is, as much as, uh, I've seen you guys in the past, uh, few months, we actually haven't had a regular meeting. So I haven't had a chance to, uh, say hello, Randy Proch. Uh, I'm your, uh, now, uh, planning director, special projects manager, historic preservation officer, whatever hat needs to be worn. I've, uh, worn them all so far in the, about four months now or so I've been here. Uh, there's a number of things going on with this, uh, department. I say this department being myself and on a part-time basis Rena, when she comes over from, uh, code enforcement. Uh, just a quick pause, I'd like to thank her for getting everything set up tonight without me there. And, uh, you know, I again apologize for having COVID, but what are you going to do? Uh, we're looking to continue this rhythm with you as far as, uh, we'll have a work-study session. The next meeting will have a re- a recommendation hearing item. So immediately following, uh, this regular meeting, we'll go right into our work-study session, uh, once again, uh, to talk about the next topic. There is essentially an infinitum amount of, uh, topics to cover, uh, two of which here landscaping. Uh, right now, our code does not tell you how much to plant, which I thought was an odd, uh, omission. Uh, we had someone, uh, recently say, at what quantity do you need trees and what quantity do you need shrubs or ground cover? I told him I don't have any code language about that, which is very odd. Uh, the other one is zoning districts, that's what this image is, uh, displaying here. This, uh, recently came up. It wasn't a big deal, but now has suddenly become a bigger deal. There are a number There are a number of residential subdivisions uh within uh original area of the town. And now city, excuse me, uh, that were platted and zoned in the county before we were uh a jurisdiction in nineteen eighty seven. So a lot of these have uh zoning districts which do not mil- uh meet the intent. Of what was uh underlying on that zoning. What I mean by that is, this is uh in Cora Drive North, uh, just south of you. These houses here are R one fifteen, which requires fifteen foot side setbacks. And then on a corner lot, a thirty foot side setback. You can see that the build condition, you know, the one on the very left has ten foot side setbacks, the next one has seven, next one has five. Essentially, these sorts of uh situations are all legal nonconforming. Again, they are, they always have been, not a big deal, what this came up though is. Uh, recently someone called me looking to purchase a house like this and asked for uh zoning information, I explained the legal nonconformity. Uh, situation, it created a uh pause in their funding and their uh loan application. Because because of legal nonconformity, they're not permitted to build. Uh, the same exact house and the same exact footprint if one hundred percent destroyed. Legal con- nonconformity has allowance up to fifty percent loss, you can rebuild as is. Anything above, it has to meet all current standards. So this is an opportunity to uh rectify that situation and. Uh, maybe look at what the zoning districts are versus the built conditions and make adjustments. Again, this is an upcoming conversation, as you know, staff report is not a uh a discussion, it's only for information. If you have any questions about this or the other things I'm gonna talk about right now, feel free to email me, reach out. Uh, through email, through phone, we can talk about it further, but these are upcoming topics. Uh, the rest of these staff report items, uh, I work integration, looks something like this, this is a piece of software. That our building departments, our code enforcement uh department and our public works department all use. This is essentially a repository and a uh a tracking bit of software for permits. Planning and zoning has now added themselves uh to this license and we have started going uh through all the twenty twenty four cases uh. For inclusion, this is where that file number of P Z dash two four dash, you know, XX comes from as far as. These will all relate back to case numbers, you may have seen case numbers every now and then through different kinds of applications, mostly zoning. This kind of nomenclature is gonna be passed along to all application types. Uh, this just ties into the master spreadsheet. We have uh sorted and found all case files from nineteen eighty nine. To current uh through five different filing cabinets and three different rooms, we are going through all the ones of historic. And we'll put them into the system, we'll get it all scanned in. Uh, next, we are looking to uh invoke a relationship with ASU, I've worked with ASU for a number of years on internships and. Uh, job placements for their students, they have a uh professional G I S division. And staff and students that can help us uh utilize G I S G S as geographical information systems, essentially our mapping. Uh, we have very little uh mapping available, uh, we use static maps, this is an opportunity to. Have an interactive uh database that's just map based uh for use, uh, this, this is the only jurisdiction I've known that does not have. Hardly any G I S. Uh, special projects, Litchfield Square, uh, Humming, uh, I think. You know, one of the things that we're gonna talk about it here in our work study session, uh, that was of concern is, how's it going? Uh, it's now uh nearly wrapped up, quite frankly, uh, you'll see barricades coming down this at the end of this week. For more roads to be open, part of the park will be open, uh, the playground equipment, which was the long lead item, uh. That they decided to wait even longer to combine shipping uh for us, uh, kind of like uh Amazon, I guess. Uh, made that wait even longer, that should be here the first week of December. Once that's in, the poor and place rubber surfacing goes in and we're nearly wrapped up uh just beyond uh punchless items. The Hilltop, which is the, you know, Litchfield Homestead, La Loma. Uh, is uh getting geared up to be essentially the next uh special project, uh, the. Our Free School District is uh voting on finalizing uh the plans for a four hundred, four hundred fifty student. Uh, Performing Arts High School and seven hundred seat performing arts center, uh, that will hold uh. Concerts, not only student performances, but also uh different touring concerts throughout the year. The Maricopa County has approved the five million dollar uh. Project budget, uh, that'll be going to the city of Litchfield Park for the library. Uh, certainly, we're meeting with the historical society even about three hours ago, as they uh ramp up plans for the museum, it's all. Coming together very suddenly, which is exciting because, you know, all of this. Further encourages revitalization as quickly as possible for the rest of that hill. Uh, and that kind of ties into the historical side of the last item, you uh, along with landscaping in the zoning uh district uh. Error, let's call it, you may see something coming forward for a future uh work size session on um. Adding additional language within our design standards and within uh the makeup of the designer review board to look at a historical perspective. I don't think it's something that we've uh considered previously as far as an inclusion of a historian on the designer review board to really consider if. Uh, some of the more modern home features and uh designs really still. Makes sense in our Litchfield Park Village here. Uh, Chair, that is at the end of my staff report, it won't normally be that many items, but again, I'm uh making up from about. Uh, summer through uh now on topics.
Thank you, uh, there are any commissioners' reports on current events? Seeing none, move on to adjournment, we have a motion.
Second?
Motion is second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Us posed, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. On to work session, so this is the planning and zoning's work study session. It's to follow immediately after the planning and zoning commission regular meeting, this work session is now. Called to order, um, we've already done the pledge allegiance today. Gonna skip that one, we'll go to the business presenter, Randy, if you take over for presentation for the first item.
Chair, thank you, item three A on this work study session is a citizen review, all work study sessions have uh. Two items, first is a citizen review to allow any uh citizens residents to make any comments. Ahead of this presentation on uh permitted uses, so uh. We'll look to you, uh, to Rena as well to see if there's any uh residents that wish to speak on this item.
He's shaking her head no, so we got a no.
Thank you. I will move on to item B, this is a uh work study session and this is, you know, an open conversation, this isn't a uh. This is a recommendation hearing, so feel free to interrupt, interject, this is a conversation on permitted uses. So our uh permitted uses are found within section twenty eight, uh, which is known as the zoning matrix, uh, there's. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work backwards before we get into ours specifically. Best practices, peer cities, generally across the land, uh, there's categories as follows. Permitted, uh, which just means you're good to go, nothing further is required uh from you to us. Permitted with conditions, this is um. I'd say modern uh take on how to handle situations uh that are somewhere between permitted and conditionally permitted. Just to jump ahead and go back, conditionally permitted are, all conditions must be met and it still requires a public hearing. What we're finding as an industry, quite frankly, is. A lot of residents uh go to these planning and zoning commission hearings in other cities, take Avondale, for example, on mini storage on Indian School Road. Hoping to uh plead their case that uh the commission or the council will. Consider, you know, health, safety, welfare and uh deny or prohibit. A conditional use permit from being obtained. The problem of which is a conditional use permit means you have conditions to meet. If you're meeting the conditions, it's very hard for a city council or planning zoning commission to 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 deny it. Because you've met all the conditions. So just to work backwards, this is where permitted with conditions comes in. There's a number of uses that the the hearing is essentially a formality because they aren't uses that are. Detrimental to health, safety, welfare, that's not to say that's for all situations, there are certainly some uses that still should require. The hearing, the public review, the public input period, so again, these are ones that, you know. Again, there's, again, uh, best practices for peer cities. Uh, the last three prohibits very easily, uh, you'll, there's, there's always uh a situation in other cities where. If the cell is blank in that table, does that mean prohibited or does not mean prohibited because you haven't defined what a. Cell that's prohibited should have in that field, so that's an easy one. Uh, accessory uses and temporary uses, accessory uses are only permitted when there's a primary or principal use. I say that to tell you that there's been number of examples throughout my career where. It's a vacant lot, someone wants to do, you know, uh, farmer's market or something like that, but there isn't. Dust proofing, there isn't fire access, there's nothing there to ensure health, safety and welfare. Uh, this, there's a, it's about two or three years old, but there was a very famous example in Mesa where there was a. Farmer's market of sorts with like, you know, the barrel uh train pulling by A T V and. Lights and music and face painting that just took over a vacant lot. You know, no, no dust proofing, no fire access, uh, the residents that lived adjacent to it were uh not happy about it, eventually it was. Removed because there wasn't a mechanism to be successful there. That's why uh you need to have that principal use there to ensure that you're just acting uh. Uh, subordinately to that, I guess you could say. And lastly, uh, temporary uses, this is where the farmer's market could have fallen in. Uh, this is something you'll see in a lot of other parts of the valley, we don't really have the opportunity here, but you'll see fireworks stands. Pumpkin patches, Christmas tree lots where, you know, they got the temporary fencing and then you're suddenly rolling on rocks. For a very small area that you're supposed to park on because that's the dust proofing surface, that's the kind of thing I'm referring to. For us, however, our section twenty eight looks kind of like this, uh, I I'd call it alphabet soup. I've, this is. There's, there's so many learning curves here in Litchfield Park that I'm still getting accustomed to, but. I I think there was good intent that kind of just got convoluted and swollen at some point. Uh, the idea that we have some uses that are only subject to development agreement, which basically we're announcing contract zoning, which is not. Uh, which is atypical, I'd say, generally, your code is written in such a way that it's advancing the general plan. And it is enforceable and executable, to say that there's certain things like uh a development agreements required is. This is the only place I know that has like that. P permitted without social conditions, perfect. Uh, the O for conceptual overlay approval, further district classi- classification required, that's. I'm not exactly sure why, uh, that's the way, the way it is, um. That's something that can be handled just through uh conditions alone, uh, you use, uh, is a use permit. Uh, ironically or oddly, we have a use permit section. I still don't know if it's for temporary uses or conditional uses or special uses, uh, those are all very different things. Uh, just from other places, especially uses for like airports, cemeteries, landfill, that sort of thing, conditional uses, you know, as we talked about. Uses that uh require a public hearing and meet conditions, and then of course, a temporary is, is a very different approval process. I, I had a situation that I was uh reviewing the code for a temporary use. And reviewing the use permit section and could not figure out how to approve the temporary use without bringing it before uh this board. And this, I should say, this commission, excuse me, fortunately, in the administration section and section three. Zoning administrator has uh ability to approve temporary use. Something to probably clarify uh through this update. Um, I don't want to keep you all night, so just, you could see just. There's a lot of exceptions, uh, depending on time of day, full moon, uh, if it's, you know, uh. Day ending and why as far as how to be successful. I'll pause here, cause again, this is a work study, so any thoughts or comments on this so far?
I think all of the issues that you pointed out are are valid, uh, there, it's, it is a. Little bit of an odd code that you, and everything you're pointing out seems to be a little atypical.
Thank you. Oh, procedure. And this is intentional, this is everything we allow, uh, which is. Which is a lot for three point three square miles, quite frankly, I'm. I know that this code was written in the idea that we would be much uh bigger than we ended up being, uh. You know, we can talk about Palm Valley other day, but uh, this was an opportunity to look at this, you'll see upcoming. We're gonna talk about uh city center, Litchfield Square, uh, zoning as well as far as. What is, what was, uh, what may not need to be. You know, uh, last time we had a work study session was about sign code and I wasn't as prescriptive. I wanted to make sure that the conversation was open and at this time, you know, just uh through legal review and uh best practices, I am going to uh. Suggest a number of things in these upcoming slides and certainly look for your feedback. As far as uh what we would consider for removal, as far as this will never be a thing in Litchfield Park. We don't have enough developable land left, it, we don't see any uh sites for uh revitalization or. Or redo that would meet this intent, uh, so those examples include uh for consideration on removal. Cemeteries and crematoriums, uh, we have a use called uh gas or propane dispensing wholesale. As if we were a refueling station uh for, you know, uh, commercial businesses, not for retail sales. I don't, I don't know of this ever being a thing, uh, in Buckeye, I was working in a hydrogen refueling center, so maybe that's what they had in mind, uh, but. Uh, probably one we don't need, uh, hookah bar, uh, this is essentially splitting hairs and I'll have to come back to you, uh. In the recommendation meeting as far as what is a smoke shop versus a hookah lounge versus, you know, a C V S that sells cigarettes. As far as how those operate and act. Off track bedding establishments, I don't believe we have any here, I uh, probably not something that we need to uh consider. As far as uh in continued inclusion within our code. Uh, palmistry, palm reading, fortune telling, uh, I would assume if uh any of those. Uh, business owners had issue with this, they would be there tonight, otherwise, uh, perhaps they don't know the fortunes as well as they think. Knowing that no one's there with you this evening except Rena, I'm guessing they're not opposed to removal. Uh, the last thing, uh, tattoo and body piercing, this, this comes up a lot as far as uh. The modern makeup of society, the caveat I would tell you is. Everyone knows of a high end shop, it's a thousand dollars an hour and that's great. If you allow it, you allow all types, just like if you allow all restaurants, you allow all types of restaurants or. There's no anti-competition, there's no, uh, you know, you can only do high end, you can't do low end, so this is one. That, you know, certainly this is met in all of the adjacent jurisdictions that surround us. Uh, these, again, just to sum up for this slide, these are things that, you know, staff and uh our attorney did not feel as though we need to continue to include within code. And I'd be happy to take any questions on this.
Just had a quick question, a use within, a questionable use like this within a more established um business such as a. A hair salon, beauty salon, whatever, that may do body piercing, pierced ears, uh, other piercing. Hard to pull that use out within a permitted use, so that would be acceptable?
So, uh, you know, Chair Commissioners, that's, that's a great question because. There always are gonna be occasions where, you know, if it's a gas station but it has a car wash, is it a car wash? And really this falls under, you know, principle versus accessory uses or uh. Uses that go with the principal use, so to that question, uh, you know, staff would not consider that. Example as a piercing studio or a tattoo shop, that would be a situation where it's uh. It's a salon that offers all types of services that would just fall under that, this would. this use would only be uh, in this situation, if it was the principal use, if it was the entirety of the business versus something that's just offered as a service within a much larger uh, palette of services.
So just to follow up, would you, for that revenue stream, do you base it on percentage? Or how would you classify that? Is it twenty-five percent of the business or a separate revenue stream, uh, somebody who leases a body piercing, uh, chair, whatever, within the salon? You're really getting into their business, so.
Uh, that's true. And Commissioner, that's, that's not an easy one. Uh, you know, I always think of the example of liquor licenses, uh, you know, series twelve versus series six. And actually, we'll, we'll come up to that in an upcoming slide as far as, there's a certain threshold, I think it's forty percent of uh, total sales need to be food in order to be considered restaurant. After that, it's considered a bar, quite frankly. So this would be an occasion where uh, the review would occur during the business license. So if it was a situation where you know, the chair is rented and essentially the salon owner only owns the brick and mortar and every uh, person there is an independent contractor that has an independent business license. As they would uh, submit to us, you know, they say tattoo, you know, artist or body piercer. That would be the occasion where this would be, this would be prohibited in this situation, but it'll only be in the situation, you know, to your uh, point that they were doing it independently as an independent business. If they were just under that whole umbrella of a salon and only one business license. We would be none the wiser in that situation.
Any other questions on these topics? No, go ahead, Randy.
Are there, so just, uh, sorry, uh, just to pause there, Chair, um, are there any that uh, Commission would say that we've got wrong?
Looks like everybody agrees with you.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate it because you're very small on my screen. The verbalization of uh, body language. Uses for uh, modification. These are ones where, does it make sense? Does it not make sense? We may be overstepping to strike a large portion of uses that we don't uh, consider fitting Litchfield Park. You know, there's, there's, the world keeps changing. We don't want to limit one's ability to, you know, find business and open businesses here. So here's just a vague list. I don't have, uh, I don't have many, but I'll highlight a few for you as far as just something to consider. Uh, building contractors, this is you know, storage yard, we have Monument Point in the far east side of our city that's zoned industrial. You'll see that kind of use in those situations. Uh, car rentals. I don't, I don't know if this would ever come up, but you know, I can think of, I can think of a few fries supermarkets around the valley that have like an Avis car rental built into it. So maybe it's a thing or like an enterprise sort of situation. So maybe it makes sense. Certainly, you know, our commercial centers are overparked, so maybe this will take up some of the overparking, I guess. Uh, chemical storage, uh, probably makes sense in industrial, but maybe something we uh, could consider as far as, does it make sense for us? A department stores. You know, this is kinda like video rental stores. I think some cities still have video rental stores on the books. Uh, does department store still make sense? Maybe, maybe not, uh. This may be one that where we need to ensure that um, it's scaled appropriately. You know, just for consideration, not for tonight, but uh, you know, certainly take direction moving forward. Equipment rentals, uh, someone leaving back to contractors yard as far as it makes sense in industrial. Uh, again, gasoline or propane dispensing wholesale. This is maybe a, excuse me, that should have been on the previous slide, not on this one. Scratch that. And industries construction, again, more with equipment rental and building contractors. This may be an opportunity now that I'm saying it aloud and we're having this conversation that all three of those could be combined uh, into one more vague definition just for that kind of uh, construction-related businesses. A non-chartered financial institution, that's a fancy way of saying payday loan. There, that's one where we would uh, consider and it should be on the next slide, I apologize. That you don't wanna have those next to the pawn shop, which is next to the body piercing studio, which is next to the bar. You, you change the look and feel very quickly when you have the concentration of those, let's call them sensitive uses, where you don't wanna have one person go essentially from one for the other to the other to the other, and you really change the look and the feel of community when you have that sort of uh, concentration. So that one in pawn shops may need to be ones where uh, separation requirements are instilled. We may have that on the books today already, but I would say that we may need to double down in something, uh, again, I'm talking past my slides. There's a, there's a very specific caveat that I've used in the past for separations to say that they are regardless of political subdivision in parentheses. What I mean by that is the, the distance is without uh, without city limits essentially. So if there's a pawn shop across the street in Avondale, you still would count that within your separation requirements, even if they're in a different jurisdiction. I wish we could force that upon other cities, uh, so that they couldn't put, you know, mini storage next to our backyards, but they operate independently of us. Uh, pest control service is probably okay for Monument Point. We'll just, you know, ensure that some of these uses are just defined for industrial zoning. You know, you'd have that sort of, uh, you know, six AM to three PM sort of uh, workforce and concentration of uses and uh, complimentary uses within the same area. Truck terminals, uh, we just, uh, hopefully you all had a chance to tune in or attend uh, last week's meeting on uh, trucks within the city. I don't know why we have this on the books. I don't know why we would wanna have truck terminal on the books as far as bring your trucks in and so we can cite you for driving through the city, uh. Probably one we really need to reconsider. Uh, and then uh, just the last two vehicle sales, vehicle storage. Probably makes sense in industrial, but probably nowhere else. Uh, with that, I'll pause there and see if there's any questions on this slide.
Go ahead.
I think uh, you may need to uh, expand the definitions just a little bit. Uh, car rentals, for instance, I have a client that does the equivalent of the verbo rentals, but with cars instead of uh, apartments or rooms for rent. And they run that business out of their homes. So they, basically there's a home-based business versus, you know, um, another traditional sense of business. Um, and another one would be uh, industries, construction. There's a lot of contractors that work out of their homes, so it'd be a home-based business, but what's, what's the metric? What are you saying is if it's this category, industries, comma, construction or a construction business?
Uh, Chair Commissioners, thank you for the questions. So just a last answer or last question first. Uh, someone who parks their uh, contract or their, uh, you know, contractor's equipment at their house is not a home-based business. Uh, because you're not coming to them uh, for repairs. If they're working on their own house, again, that wouldn't count. So someone that parks there or has their equipment and then leaves and goes to sites is not a home-based business. That would only uh, qualify when someone comes to your house for the services. The most common one is daycare. Uh, there's some others as far as, uh, you know, I'm a, I'm a notary, I'm a, I'm an insurance agent, that sort of thing. That's really limited as far as uh, currently the city's allowance for those kinds of things to occur. Uh, your other question, I've lost my place, can you repeat it?
That was the, the car rentals? You know, it, it happens either when people come to the house and rent a car, or they go out and deliver the car to their client.
I, I know, thank you. I know this recently came up and I know, I don't remember, Cola Rina has a mic. I know this uh, came up recently as far as the maximum amount of vehicle dealer cars you could have parked at your house. Rena, if you have a mic with you, can you chime in if I'm misremembering or combining the wrong thing?
Uh, I don't have a mic, so I won't hear you, but um, I, I don't understand your questions.
Were you able to hear, Rena?
Yes, so I, I know, um, and I apologize for not having all the details, but I remember there being some sort of allowance for up to six essentially blue plates uh, within a house and maybe uh, Commissioner, that's not what you're referring to as far as the blue plate cars, as far as how many you can park at your house. But, um, I don't know if it
Verbo, yeah, where? That is different.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, I can, the only example I can think of is Zipcar, but I think that was like from fifteen years ago. I didn't know if that was still occurring. Is, is the business you're referring to here in Litchfield Park?
Uh, it's in Goodyear, but they have multiple cars and then they rent them out by the day or, or week.
I, I would, I'll look into that further and research it further. I'll talk to my counterparts, uh, there to see how they handle that because uh, most home-based businesses have maxims as far as like one per hour, no more than two cars parked at any time. Because there's an expectation, if you live in a residential district, that you don't have the kinds of passerby and constant traffic that'd be generated from someone going to a business within a residential zone. So if it's if it's something that we wanna entertain, I'll look into it a little bit further for you to say, uh, how we could be successful if we were to implement that here.
Do you have any other questions on this slide? Doesn't look like we have any other questions on this slide. Are you looking for some direction on this slide?
Uh, agree, yes, Chair, same as last time.
Anybody have any concerns?
I would just say, expand the definition a little bit. Like car rentals, I don't feel is, covers quite enough. Uh, discuss a couple of options there. And construction, uh, if a plumber has two vans or three vans parked at their house. You know, they're going out to the customer, but
And, and I know some people who have, do construction too, and they just have a second fence in their yard. So they do have a bunch of equipment there, but you don't see it. And so it's, it's not obvious, but that's where they run their business and people come and consult them and go to their homes and consult them and they go out and they do what they need to do. So, so I, yeah, I think construction's kinda could be a great area.
Thank you. And you know, I can think of those examples because I've had those kinds of businesses, but they were always very large lot in rural settings as far as, there was almost a look and a feel that was consistent. I would be I'd be very curious if anyone like on Old Litchfield or Bird Lane, you know, suddenly had, you know, uh, skid steers in their backyard that were you know, essentially assembling a group of people. Well, I guess it's kinda like the Wigwam maintenance building as far as an example goes, but uh, regardless, these, oh, thank you for the feedback, you know, certainly anything we talk about tonight is uh, great information and I'll look into it further on your behalf. We'll move forward.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, some uses to consider for separation, again, regardless of political subdivision, I've talked past this a little bit, but uh, I have examples uh, for your consideration. We never thought this would happen and then it did happen in Peoria. We have two gas stations in the same parking lot. Uh, how this happens is because uh, fries was not in the fuel game and then they became in the fuel game. And suddenly, uh, there was, there was two gas stations, uh, it was about three hundred feet apart. And did it make sense? Uh, did, was it necessary? Did it, did it change the look in the field, the neighborhood? Yeah, it really did and you know, uh, of course, a catty corner, uh, opposite corner, uh, depending on your kitty corner, depending on your dialect. Uh, there was another gas station of Valero. So we had a Valero, uh, a Circle K and a Fries gas, all within the same area. So this was this was an after-the-fact change that I would encourage us to get ahead of as far as we probably don't wanna concentration of that sort of thing. Uh, same with car wash. The, for some reason, uh, it's uh, the three-minute car wash and the quick quack are friendly rivals, but also uh, we're not related to each other, but are on friendly terms. And whenever one opens, the other opens across the street. And I just don't know if we need that many car washes now. You know, this was one that went to legal review to say, I, I think we're at our quota. And similar to mini storage, I think we're at our quota and, you know, one of the conversations I had, uh, with our attorney is is there opportunity to maybe create a legal non-conformity and strike these from the code to ensure we don't have more. And that's probably an overreach from my part, but I thought I'd at least ask the question to say you know, just to get the example, if you've drive south to get here uh, in a different jurisdiction at Bethany Home and Litchfield Road at our entry, there are two and now a third mini storage business with all in the same intersection, which just seems bizarre, quite frankly. Now, for those that don't know, a mini storage is almost uh, land banking. It's a very low amount of investment to buy highly seen uh, corners, in this case against two arterials. You know, you do your mini storage business as long as you want until the land value appreciates. You sell the land, demolish the mini storage and do something else with it for the next donor. So, you know, we already have two uh, mini storages as they were, one behind uh, the Dignity Healthcare area and then the other in Monument Point. If you've been over to Monument Point down Camelback Road, you can see it uh, from our three-story mini storage across the street to the north, there's now another uh, three-story mini storage, which is, uh, I, I guess we need more storage in our houses, I guess, or something, but uh, these are ones I would uh, encourage uh, for your consideration to have minimum separation so you don't have a concentration. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Comments? No questions or comments?
Thank you. We will uh, consider separations in these three uses. Uh, the other section of code that has uses is city center. Uh, John gave you a presentation back in May. I was talking about that hell, uh, the height allowance. I wanna quickly address that because that was something you had asked him to move forward. I've, I've watched the video a few times. I've talked with city staff. We've, we've reviewed the code language. The other good thing that's come out of this is we've had submittals uh, since that time at the north end and the south end that are meeting our requirements as written. So just to maybe update you as far as where that left off in May, there is not any desire or need, in our opinion, uh, to change the height allowances. We think the one hundred fifty foot from fairway, you know, from property line inward within city center, same thing with Wigwam from property line inward. Uh, does not need to change as far as that two-story thirty-five-foot height restriction. If you've ever noticed in uh, the lot lines, they weren't arbitrary as far as why so many of the blocks were split. They essentially created the parking field and the building footprint areas. So uh, for lots, one and two at the north end, uh, you know, that's something that came up in your May meeting, the building is pushed all the way to the south and of those, uh, of that northwest corner adjacent to the biz, uh, the homes. I think, I forgot who had asked about that. So that's one that we are certainly cognizant of and will continue to restrict height accordingly in that, even in that situation. Uh, the other one here, uh, surrounding City Hall has come in for review. They're putting the parking field against Wigwam, they're putting the building against uh, Honeysuckle at the north end, uh, behind City Hall. So I at least wanted to give you uh, an update on that before we talk about the uses and certainly ask uh, if there's any questions about that.
Any questions on that?
Part of your setback include sidewalks. Are this, for instance, like are the, I, I know oftentimes the sidewalks are not done at one time. They wait for the developer to put the sidewalk in. And are we just gonna take the bullet and do it all at once so that we have a safer, safer pathways and out of traffic?
Yeah, so Chair Commissioners, for Litchfield Square, we uh, are wrapping it up and, you know, I can't wait for this uh, weekend to happen. Hopefully then I'll get out there and see more of it as the fence continues to recede into what's left to be developed. I will tell you that the entirety of this square has the sidewalks. There were a couple of decisions made as far as value engineering with GMP six, that means guaranteed max price, that had to be removed. So some areas that were the uh, almost That had to be removed. So some areas that were the uh almost duplicative. Pavers section that were beyond uh the width of the sidewalks already were removed as part of GMP six. So. Uh what's working out really well is uh that area includes the area behind City Hall, a smidge along a La Loma. The frontage of Honeysuckle and then uh a portion of Desert Avenue. Again, these are. Uh three sides that surround the City Hall building uh for those. Uh looking for a visual here. So that's one of the smells that we have in. As part of their improvements, they'll do the paver path and uh any other improvements that are essentially within their lot. But everywhere will have uh sidewalks for certain.
Any other questions? Not seeing any?
Thank you. So here's uh the use table, much easier to fit on one slide. Uh for uh the city center zoning district. For reasons unknown, you know, we again try to stuff so much into the existing code. You know, city center is uh technically section twenty-seven dot C. You know, agritourism and commercial flex also got squeezed into there. We didn't want to redo numbering, so we added. It's kind of like when you're in the highlights, exit one hundred A, one hundred B, uh depending on what you offer, if you're going on. But uh we want to. Bring this before you as part of this permitted use conversation to tell you that there's a few things in here that we think uh need revision. Uh to that point, uh convention center and residential uses. Right now, and I'll back up before you can see him, uh residential units, second one on the left, convention center, third one down on the right. Uh right now, we said that they need a PD overlay. And you know, again, uh part of this being uh month five or month four here, I. The city center zoning district was essentially uh a PD or a planned development already. That was tailor-made zoning district for a very small, small segment of land. Instead of uh keeping the underletting zoning and doing a PD overlay, we just created CTR zoning instead, which had all the. Unique uh requirements and uh. Needs uh for that district. That's it, yeah, you're getting ahead. Uh I'll get there. Um so the thought. That we had to do a PD overlay on specific uses. Within a already custom zoning district that doesn't meet any of the intent of PD. Is uh odd to me. I I don't see how we can do this successfully. I I would tell you that I've asked our uh attorney to uh. Confirm my suspicions that I don't think this is the appropriate measure or uh way to go about this. This is. Probably something that we can just do conditions on, either permitted with conditions. Or maybe a CUP if we do feel as a public hearing is needed for a convention center or for residential uses. I I I don't know that either of those necessarily uh rise to the level of. Uh that sort of feedback, maybe convention center depending on the size, but certainly we couldn't park a convention center anyways. And the idea that uh residential units uh be it townhomes, apartments, what have you, would need. A PD overlay on a use, I I just don't know. Um again, I don't have the historical knowledge, so. I'd ask if any uh commission members have any sort of rationale as why this was created as it was.
No.
Okay.
No, and everything you're saying makes sense to me, so. It it would be strange to have a a PD within a PD.
Uh essentially, yes, yes, uh. Yeah, and really, um depending on your jurisdiction, this is called a PD, this is called a PAD, this is called a PUD. Essentially, it's designed for special circumstances. You have a wash running through the property. There's a mountain behind it. Uh you lack. Uh appropriate uh access points, so it's a, the PD is essentially the. Uh and this will ties into our earlier conversation about CSPs. The PD is essentially the same sort of mechanism to. Address uh how letter of law cannot be met, and you're looking to. Tailor make uh situations that can, you know, help as far as a development site. Generally above forty acres, so. I I don't understand this one, but I will uh wait for the legal's opinion of it. Moving on. Uh some uses to consider for uh modification. Right now, and I'll show this and I'll go back. Um no, I can't, I don't have to go back. Uh. Use permits. So recreation, entertainment, greater than seventy-five thousand square feet or outdoor. I don't know that that one or retail site above seventy-five hundred square feet or the resort expansion rooms. That might, and the resort expansion rooms is a unique uh. Inclusion, I think this is more in lines of, you know, the Kubudo days of when. City Center was originally envisioned as an extension of the Wigwam Resorts. I think this is uh maybe historic from there. I I don't think, uh and this is again different than our sign code uh workday session, this is ones where I'm giving opinion of the matter and seeing if. Uh there's uh concurrence on these sorts of things. None of these three um make sense for me uh as a conditional use permit. There are some. Of these and maybe all three of these that are either outright permitted or just permitted with conditions. What I mean by that is. If you are a retail establishment above seventy-five hundred square feet, then. You'll need to include additional parking or a loading zone because you're expecting larger deliveries because you're a larger kind of business. Same with recreation entertainment. If it's greater than seventy-five hundred square feet or outdoor. Uh maybe there's one that needs to consider, you know, noise, uh hours of operation, those sorts of things that can be handled. Through conditions, but again, not necessarily a conditional use permit. And welcome any feedback on this slide.
So Randy, the conditional use versus conditional use permit, one is subject to a public hearing and the other is not, is that?
That's correct, and I I make that differentiation, just tell you that. There are some uses that should have, a public hearing should have, neighborhood feedback. Should have the commission consider health, safety and welfare. So like, for example, outdoor recreation. Yeah, lights, uh you know, pickleball, uh echoes, that sort of thing. Maybe one where conditional use permit may make sense, uh you know, recreation entertainment inside, if it's axe throwing or escape room that just. It's ten thousand square feet, does that need to be one that is a conditional use permit or if it's just. Uh permitted with conditions. Again, what I mean by that is. Uses that are outright permitted don't have any sort of caveat asterces or anything like that. Permitted with conditions, maybe, you know, hours of operation are limited in these zoning districts. It may be additional parking may be required in these tissues, those sorts of things that doesn't need. A hearing to ensure uh conditions are met.
I think that the resort expansion rooms might be referring or. Pertaining to the northwest corner of Litchfield and Wigwam. I think there was some thought at some point in time that that was what it might be used for. And I remember the seventy, I remember we had a discussion, I think, on this commission. For the size of seventy-five hundred square feet. Do you remember that as well? We did, right? Okay.
Yes.
And we came up with that seventy-five hundred square feet. I can't tell you how or why, but at the time we. We liked that number.
Okay.
Um and I think that those were three uses that we. Did want to see conditional use permits for. It would require public hearings.
Excellent, and uh Chair Commissioners, if that's your feedback, this will not be modified per your direction.
Thanks.
Thank you.
But without.
Go ahead.
Anything bigger, you could be looking at like a Fat Cats or a Main Event or something on that level. It's just like Fat Cats is um up in surprise at Waddell, sixty-one thousand.
Right.
Square feet. The arcade itself is forty-eight hundred.
I appreciate your sales taxes as a resident. Moving forward. Uh uses considered for modification, uh food truck court. We have this and I'll go back to the table. Food truck court, you'll see on the right-hand side of the Fs is a use permit. Uh that uh law changed uh twice. Kevin Payne, the representative from Peoria uh made the food truck freedom bill uh which. Uh preempted almost everything a city can do as far as how food trucks operate. These are intended to be temporary though, so even if it's uh. You know, part of the park has a wide enough path for like a food truck alley to be located on there. That's not one, uh to my knowledge, that we can uh. Ask anything further from as far as any sort of uh use permit, certainly not a conditional use permit. If it's in a, and I remember some of it because I haven't had to think about this in a while, but as long as they're in a legal parking space. They're permitted to act as it. So considering all Litchfield Square is public parking. Any one of them can park in any parking space. The other thing that really. Is uh is bothersome, but again, this is state law, is there's no minimum separation from an existing commercial business, including restaurants. So right now, I, as it is in state law, and this hasn't changed, and I don't see this changing ever. Is someone can park on Old Litchfield and someone can park on Old Wigwam as a food truck and operates. Uh you know, as they wish, uh regardless of what restaurant is right in front of you.
I I I agree with you. I that's my understanding of the law as well, but I I believe this portion of the code was more designed for. A food truck court on the actual property itself, like pave one of the lots and then have twenty food trucks on it.
Understood.
I- is it your understanding that you think that that law would apply? At that point, that's not a public road or a public parking spot?
Chair, on on private property, yes, we could go through a mechanism for approval, especially if it's an unimproved lot. So if that's the case, then yes. Um again, the curious thing, this uh table as well as section twenty-eight, it just says you. Is that conditional use permit or a temporary use permit? So that's one of the things you'll see. At our next meeting, that'll be changed as far as a T or a C or, you know, we'll figure it out.
Uh I know that there's been some people that are interested with a more permanent food truck. Court uh kind of design for those those lots. Uh I I think that might help you with your temporary or versus permanent.
Thank you. And uh one of the things that is uh designed is in uh the city center park. We don't have a better name for it yet. It's just City Center Park or Litchfield Square Park. Is that center sidewalk that runs east-west, that bisects uh the two grass areas. Wasn't designed to accommodate uh uh food trucks to park along that sort of situation. There's, there's one caveat to this whole mechanism. If they are operating as part of a special event, meaning through. You know, Parks and Rec through Tricia Kramer, then they're within that whole umbrella of a special event permit. As far as insurances and operations and uh their ability to be there. If not, if they're not part of any sort of city event, then yes, they would come. Through me, we'll clarify that in the table as far as getting a temporary use permit because. Now they're on private property, now they're operating on a temporary basis, what have you.
Any other questions or comments on this slide? I'm not seeing any.
Thank you. Uh the last thing, outdoor farmer's market uh. It's, it's right now, it's just outright permitted. Uh which is. Maybe that makes sense, maybe it doesn't. I mean, if if the idea that an outdoors farmer's market on one of, not on our property again, similar to the food truck idea. But if one of these parcels were to develop as an outdoor farmer's market. Is that the intent as far as what we're trying to accomplish as a principal use? I say that to tell you that. You know, in theory, one of these lots could be sold. And the entirety of the lot is just farm stands. There's not a building, there's not parking, there's not landscaping, it's just. You know, large fence around it and just uh you know, a food stance now. I I would tell you that I don't know of any. Uh you know, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five and one quarter operating farmers markets. These are usually like a Saturday and Sunday sort of thing. That's a. Pop-up teardown sort of thing. So this is another one of the curiosities and maybe you guys can chime in with historical knowledge as far as. Why this one was a just outright permitted?
I believe that was put into the zoning code because when they were talking about um. The historical. Area up on the hill there, at the point there was going to be an amphitheater and there was going to be people having gardens and. There was a lot of uh public involvement. And so at that point in time, they, there was the thought of having. An outdoor farmer's market that could be there on the weekends or however long. So that is why it's in code right now.
This portion of the code only applies to the city center, correct?
Yes, the uh section we're referring to, correct.
My memory is that the. Citizens. Were very interested in having a farmer's market there. To the point where somehow it turned into a permitted use. I think that is. A little strange. I think it should at least have some conditions attached to it. Lighting, food, parking, something. So I I could see maybe adjusting that, but. I don't know if that would be, if all the citizens of Litchfield Park would agree with me on that one.
Question, when we were at the fair in Litchfield Park a couple of weekends ago, we met. A gentleman, they said, yes, we have a a farmer's market here. And but I can't recall where it was, if it was one of the church parking lots, kind of like you said, a pop-up. Uh farmer's market, maybe one of you know, but uh that's kind of a use within the use. The church isn't allotted use, but then. The farmer's market that they may have once a week for three hours on a Saturday or Sunday morning. You may want to accommodate that, I don't know.
Our farmer's market is hosted right here in the city parking lot, just on the south side of it.
Okay.
That's correct, and they do have temporary use permit, they attain through me.
Okay, so that would continue as it is or another location?
Sure, but in in the example though, is a temporary one, it's, you know, the weekends. You know, uh this code allowance is for, you know, all day, every day instead of. Uh temporarily.
I mean, I could, I could certainly see permitted with conditions, given the price per foot. We are asking, there will be no farmer's market in the city square on any of these lots. Um. So I think we're probably fine to just leave it as is. If someone, if someone can make a business out of a farmer's market, given what we're going to charge, more power to them.
Yeah, depends on how much they'll charge for eggs, right? Um and Commissioner, you had mentioned the Hilltop, not to tangent off this conversation, but I'll be presenting to RPG on Thursday. Another update to the Hilltop, we'll be talking about uh programming amenities, so any of you feel free to tune in, attend. Uh those meetings are held in the conference room at City Hall uh on, maybe on Thursday night. Uh modifications, uh just to finish off, so. Uh we have a use permit required for private schools and vocational or trade schools. Public and charter schools are essentially exempt from local government as far as they can be wherever they. Feel as though they need to be. I don't know if that exemption includes. Uh vocational schools or private schools. I feel as though it may for private. Vocational or trade schools, we may have uh some level of uh control still on those, but. I've asked uh legal to look into this, but I, you know, I know there's some legal folks here as well that may have more information on that.
Shaking her head, no.
I'll I'll defer, that's just fine. Uh but that's, again, that's one, and you know, uh I didn't talk about it earlier, but you know, that's. Right now, we have the same sort of uh allowance versus disallowance for public schools, depending on the zoning district, which. Will be amended uh at the next time you see this coming forward as far as. Public schools, charter schools are essentially permitted straight across the board. There isn't any ability to uh restrict those. Uh as far as next steps go, and I appreciate, you know, hanging, hanging out with me for about an hour and a half here to uh have these two meetings, you know, we certainly appreciate. Uh ongoing and regular meetings, you know, certainly uh as I can hold regular meetings with you, we can ensure quorum and, you know, continue to have these conversations, so. Very similar to the sign code, we'll make a red line and clean version of uh these two sections of code and bring them back for you at a future date. Uh with that, my presentation is concluded.
All right. Any other questions or concerns on that? Doesn't look like it's, we'll move on to executive session. We're not having an executive session today. This item is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Vice Chair's second. All as a favor, say aye. All as opposed. Done. This meeting is adjourned.